It's hard for me to talk about this procedure really because for the record, there are six members here, not the seven that I thought I'm going to be here. However, we look at the application and break it down into its various components. Of the variances that are being requested, there is only one, which is the D4 variance for the FAR that requires five affirmative votes. Admittedly, it wouldn't matter if you approved the rest if you didn't approve the FAR because you're basically starting over again. However, we have the opportunity maybe to look at this in several different ways. To present the testimony tonight, all our witnesses are here, and at the end, to try to get a consensus of the board without actually taking the vote whether or not it's prudent for us to proceed or not to proceed. Because obviously, we need five of the six of you for the D4. The rest of the variances only require a majority, which would be four. So, I say that only for the record because I don't know, as I said, it's a practical matter of whether you would proceed if you had your D4 denied. But I don't want to see, and I know my clients concerned about it, but we don't want to see another month go by and not give you the opportunity to hear the application. So, I think that we haven't also the opportunity, if we present our testimony, and we can get a sense of the board's view, and there may be some concern, we can always carry it to have the vote taken at the next meeting with a seventh member listening to the transcript. I mean, that does happen. I don't like to do it. I think, I don't recommend my clients redo it, but it is possible. The problem that you have with that is, that doesn't mean the six of you are going to be the six that are here next time anyway. So, then maybe we don't know who has to listen to it either. So, it gets difficult. But I'm kind of trying to get the sense of this, that with the six here, and knowing that it's the FAR, the rest of them only require four votes, I think it's realistic for us to proceed, as long as my client's not waiting in the back and telling me what else to add. So, I think we'll proceed. I would like to, at least at the end, after any public comment and after the discussion, to try to get a consensus. The worst thing that can happen to me is to go with six and then have a 4-2 vote. It would be very difficult for me to justify what's happening here, but I know we've lost, I know we have applications that are backing up. If I were to say no, everybody's leaving again. I don't want to do that, I really don't. I think it makes sense to get our testimony in the record and take it from there. So, and Jeremy, I assume everything I said is in accordance with what opportunities we have.
Okay, it would be your prerogative, your last conclusion in all your testimony?
Yeah, okay. All right. Said that, as the chair has indicated, I represent Richardson Renewal Redevelopment LLC. The application involves the development of a 55-unit, four-story residential building. The building will consist of 33 studios, 72 bedrooms, 43 bedrooms, about 4-bedroom units, together with a 23 below-grade parking spaces. The application is for student housing. I think we're all aware of the initiatives of the College Avenue Overlay District, which I think for the record, it's important for me to read in the intent of that, because the overlay provides the fact that this multifamily building is a permitted use. It was previously permitted use, but it is now because the Overlay Zone District, which was adopted within the last several years. The intent of this overlay zone is to foster development of student housing in the area best suited for it. It allows for easy, natural redevelopment of student one- and two-family homes into modern student housing in a walkable and transit-rich environment. Here for low and mid-rise apartment buildings, subject to all standards of the code, are permitted. And I wanted to point that out because it is somewhat different to see the developments such as this go into a zone that's otherwise a 5A zone. But I think the planning board and the city council saw this as an opportunity to develop more of the multifamily housing for the area that's immediately adjacent to the campus, which is, as indicated here, it's walkable and there's public transportation that's available to it. And I think that's a factor that we will provide testimony for you to understand that the project itself needs a parking variance. The parking variance is, been designed, in my client's intent here, is to somewhat model this after a project that was developed by them about 10 years ago on Bartlett Street. And that's essentially the same parking ratio that's being requested, and that building today has a surplus of parking. Now, I'm not testifying, I'm letting you know our thought process. You'll get that testimony from the witnesses. I would also want to point out, with regard to that parking variance, is that there are currently allowable 22 of the existing buildings that are there today, that are being demolished for the project, have 22 resident-parting spaces. We will have to give those, we are volunteering to give those spaces up, which I think is a big factor in the parking situation, because what it does is it frees up 22 spaces for the other residents in the immediate area that today they don't have available to them because the current properties have them available to them, the current properties that are in this site. So, I want to point that out, because I think it's important to keep in mind, it all fits into the concept that was developed by this College Avenue Overlay District. And I think essentially, I think we are the first application to come in under that overlay district, so I thought it was important to point it out to you. Again, there are other variances that are necessary, some of which are a result of putting a building of this character and this size in that location, the unusual configuration of the lot, which always happens when you're essentially doing an assembly, you don't know what you're going to end up with, but in this case, you've got somewhat of an irregular-shaped lot that we end up with. So therefore, that affects a lot width, which we need a variance for, of 67 feet versus 100. It affects the side yard setbacks of 4.47, where as a minimum of 10 feet is required. There's a combined side yard variance, there's a rear setback variance, and also building coverage, which is only 68% versus 55. But those fault variances are largely driven by the type of building that's being built and the configuration of the lot. There is a parking aisle width in the parking area of 22 feet, whereas 24 is required. It's not uncommon, we've had other applications that approved that, and it isn't the entire driveway aisle, it's only a portion of the garage. There are sign variances, essentially because of the size of this building, you're going to have multiple signs because you're on two different streets, and there are the, I think illuminations associated with that also. But it all goes to the fact that we've got a building that now is a four-story multifamily building. We also have a building height variance, which is less than 10%. It's, depending on how you measure it, we measure it conservatively 49 feet, I think project 42 is 46, but we think our measurement is correct at 49 versus 45 feet. So, it's not a significant difference, and a lot of that is driven by the fact that we're giving the residents nine-foot ceilings. And the nine-foot ceiling is amenity, and really, you know, is a better living environment for the people. And finally, the parking variance, which I mentioned previously, 23 parking spaces were asked, 66 are required. We do also have EV spaces that are provided for, that are required now by law, that will be identified in the parking structure. So, again, I did, I mentioned the D4 variance, but the actual number is 2.61 versus 2.0. So, it's not significantly consequential, but again, the FAR kind of driven by the building configuration. And we think it's appropriate for the size of the building, and again, you'll hear the testimony from the individual. That's a general overview. Again, sometimes I don't like to necessarily sound like I'm testifying, but I think it's helpful for the board to get a sense of what this substance of this, rather just looking at the picture, the substance of what we're asking for and the reasons behind it, and particularly to understand it in the context of the overlay zone, which I think is really going to really help that location to get better quality of life and living arrangements for the actual students that are living in these locations. So, with that as an overview, I would call for my first witness, Michael Sisler. Mike is the principal of the applicant, essentially the applicant. Michael.
Can I please state your names, sort of last name for the record?
Yes, Michael Sisler. S-I-S-L-E.
Do you start from the top of the whole truth and then tell me about the truth?
Yes, I do.
I appreciate you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to present our zoning application tonight. As I mentioned just before, my name's Michael Sisler, and I appreciate your time and consideration in this application. I have owned and operate Baru Living. It's premium off-campus housing, and for the last 33 years, have provided thousands of Rutgers University students with high-quality, professionally managed housing in the sixth ward. My roots here in New Brunswick are deep. I was born here in New Brunswick. I met my wife while she was attending Rutgers University. We were married at St. Peters, over on Somerset Street. We bought our first house over on Huntington Street. All four of our children were born in St. Peters. And today, I live on Livingston, I shop on Bayard, I work on Bartlett Street. I'm a local. New Brunswick has really shaped my life, and I've spent decades investing in and improving in the neighborhoods of this city where I work and live. As former students renting off-campus in the sixth ward, my wife and I experienced firsthand the challenges of dirty, dilapidated, poorly maintained housing and unresponsive landlords, and we knew we could do better. So, back in 1992, we founded Baru Living with the mission to redefine student housing and create a portfolio of well-managed, high-quality properties that we can be proud to live in ourselves. And that is one of our main, one of our main mottos. We would live in it, that's how we would want to own it and manage it. And our motto, creating off-campus housing, is a guiding principle that's reflected in our commitment to our residents' safety and security, making meaningful capital improvements into the homes, creating light new property conditions year in and year out, and providing full-time professional property management, being a good neighbor, and also doing the right thing. And this commitment has led to a nearly 100% occupancy rate over the past 33 years, which I think is a testament to our strong reputation within the community. Our proposed project at 11 Richardson Street is an opportunity to raise the standard for student housing once again, and while aligning with the goals of the city's sixth ward overlay zone that Tom discussed. 11 Richardson's unmatched proximity, it's steps from the Alexander Library and Rutgers Main plus depot. It's, in fact, it's so close, it's recognized as on-campus on the Rutgers University map. It's located in both the institutional zone and also the sixth ward overlay zone, making it an ideal location for this development. By placing students where they want to live, we also reduce housing pressure on official housing across the city. This project, I believe, represents a thoughtful, smart growth without displacing any long-term residents, and it replaces 100-year-old housing with new, safe, modern building that meets today's much more stringent safety codes and ADA accessibility standards. We discussed 12 Bartlett Street. 12 Bartlett Street was also located just a half a block off of College Avenue, as is 11 Richardson Street. It's my understanding that our building, 12 Bartlett, was one of the templates, a big template for the overlay zone. And it's a similar-sized property, similar distance again from College Avenue, and our experience managing that 12 Bartlett Street has provided us with some unique insights into this project. By aligning architectural design to match the city housing codes, we create responsible occupancy limits, preventing overcrowding today and in the future. And based upon this previously approved 12 Bartlett Street and our best practices of nationwide student housing, we've created modern, safe, high-quality, and efficient unit designs. We've also enhanced the ADA accessibility by meeting the new, much more stringent compliance standards as it relates to ADA. 12 Bartlett Street, our current property, currently has excess parking capacity, but right now, we have eight spaces that are operated. And this operational experience informs us that the parking that we're proposing at 11 Richardson Street is more than adequate, something that's important to us from a business perspective, to seek to want to rent apartments, and having adequate parking is a component to attract the residents. We're also returning 22 on-street parking permits, so thanks to the upgraded underground parking, we believe this improves the neighborhood's street parking scenario. So, thanks to all my 33 years of experience as a developer and property manager of the sixth ward, I know this unit makes a parking ratio works and will serve the residents and the city exceptionally well. We spent over a year preparing for this night. We've met with the technical advisory committee and the planning board officials, we've met with Rutgers University's Department of Off-Campus Housing, our residents, and community members, and you can recognize some of us, but we've attended these zoning board meetings, listened to residents', stakeholders', and board members' concerns, and incorporated your feedback into meaningful design updates. I take great pride in responsible development and enhancing our neighborhood. We set the standard for 12 Bartlett Street 10 years ago, and 11 Richardson Street will be the new benchmark. It's architecturally beautiful, it's featuring high-quality materials inside and out, and not just on the front of the building, but on all four sides of the building, something we've covered here several times. It's fully ADA accessible, with an elevator access to every floor, and it meets the new, more stringent ADA standards. It delivers the modern building safety standards that certainly far exceed anything you'll find in 100-year-old houses. We have private garbage collection, so we'll be keeping our streets clean and well-maintained. We also provide electric IDWID lock systems that provide secure, controlled access for our tenants, and 24/7 security cameras that deliver apprehensive indoor and outdoor monitoring. We reduce move-in and move-out waste by providing fully furnished units, which makes our operations very smooth, and it also keeps our city free of all the debris that you might see sometimes in May, you know, during, you know, project move-out, or the recent weekend project move-out. We have spacious kitchens with stainless steel appliances, countertops, dishwashers. We're providing in-unit laundry for added convenience to our residents, and central heat and AC to ensure air-out comfort. Our on-site parking garage reduces the neighborhood parking congestion by getting all the cars down into the basement, and returning the 22-street parking capacity back to the city means more parking is available on our city's streets. We have bike storage and EV charging stations to support sustainable transit. But I think maybe most importantly is that 11 Richardson Street is really just steps from College Avenue and the primary Rutgers bus depot. It's where our residents want to live, it has a proven track record of reducing the number of vehicles our residents bring with them, as vehicles are just simply not necessary when you live right next door and where you need to study and take a glass of beer glasses. The outdoor areas and green spaces are all professionally designed and will be professionally maintained. We have a safe, permanent barbecue area, this is something we're allocating from 12 Bartlett. This area is professionally maintained and free for our residents, and also means that our residents don't have to bring their own barbecues and combustible materials to the city. We provide Wi-Fi in our common areas and the study lounges to support our residents' academic excellence and productivity. And like all our buildings, 11 Richardson Street will be professionally managed by our full-time staff right here in the city of Brunswick. We deliver 24/7 emergency services, we have professional landscaping, snow removal services, private garbage collection, and daily profit inspections. So, thank you to all of you who provided input over the past year. Your feedback has shaped a much smarter and more beautiful project and benefits everybody. 11 Richardson Street, I believe, is one of the best locations in Brunswick, just steps from College Avenue, the Alexander Library, and the University bus depot, that aligns with the city's long-term vision for student housing and urban planning, and it raises the standard for student housing previous to Brunswick. And as someone who's deeply committed to this city and this neighborhood and this community, I'm passionate about this project, and I hope you share my enthusiasm. I request your support in approving this application. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Would you have any questions for Mike? At this time, I would call Mr. Frank Farrell for testimony.
Please state your names, sort of last name for the record. Frank Farrell, F-A-R-R-E-L-L.
Do you start from the top of the whole truth and then tell me about the truth?
I do.
Mr. Farrell, would you put ahead of you, if you have any time?
Yes, I have.
We'll accept you for this.
Thank you. I'm in the field of engineering.
If you could, Frank, then rather than me asking you specific questions, if you could do an overview of the site plan and engineering aspects of the application, you know, I would ask you to include in that testimony the identification of the areas where these certain variances are necessary. I know I made them out before, but I think it's helpful to place single locations.
Absolutely. I'll be referring to the site plans that I submitted, that hasn't been amended, altered, colorized, or changed in any way. If you'd like me to mark it, I'd love it.
I don't think you'd...
You should skip that?
No, it's the one that was submitted.
It was the one that's exactly the one that was submitted. So, for the start, I'm going to be referring to Sheet 2. The property is identified as Block 90, Lots 9.01, 11.01, 13, 23, and 24. There are three properties along Richardson Street, which right now is on the left-hand side of the sheet, and there are two properties on Huntington Street, which is here on the right. Richardson and Huntington Streets are both approximately 36 feet wide, two-way traffic curbs, sidewalks, provided on the right-hand side for parking. The site is currently developed with five residential homes, single-family and two-family, and there's a myriad of driveways and parking areas on the site today, which primarily represented as student housing. So, I'm going to cover really quickly, one of the variances that we're seeking is a lot width variance, which actually stems from the narrowness of the lot nearer to the Huntington Street frontage, which is 67 feet, whereas 100 feet is required. The bulk of the frontage is actually 125 feet on the Richardson Street side, but we've obviously taken in more of the narrower of the two frontages, and it indicated a lot width on that side. The, to make sure I have a further variance in case on the site plan, I prefer Sheet 3. And now, we have Huntington Street at the top, and we have Richardson Street at the bottom, so we've really been playing a little bit from the prior sheet. The minimum lot area in the College Avenue Overlay Zone is 10,000 square feet, and the total of the properties assembled before you is 19,200, which is conforming. I just mentioned lot width, which is 100 feet, whereas 67 feet on this narrower front is existing based on the lot assemage. The minimum lot depth is 100 feet, which is existing in this condition here between the Richardson Street frontage and will call this the rear yard of the lot halfway between Huntington and Richardson Street, since this is a three-lot. So, the lot depth is conforming. The minimal front yard setbacks is 10 feet, which is conforming, and that is on Richardson Street. There's a larger front setback on Huntington Street at 24.7 feet. There's a minimum one-side setback of 10 feet required, whereas 4.47 feet is proposed, and that happens to be along a section of the side yard, but from the frontage on Richardson Street, the lot will appear to be closer to the 10-foot requirement at 9.97. So, when viewing this property from Richardson Street, there was a side yard setback that is set significantly deeper into the lot, nearly a quarter of the way into the lot, or so, we're actually next down to that 4.47-foot variance. The minimum total side yard requirement is 20 feet, whereas a total of 8.90 feet is proposed. And again, that's that same, same condition, the two sides on the narrower portion are closer to that 4.5-foot setback. The minimum rear yard requirement is 25 feet, whereas 9.9 deep feet is proposed, and that is in this little L-shaped portion of the site here. Maximum building height is 45 feet, whereas 49.07 is proposed, it's a four-story building, which is compliant with the mid-rise, with the use. The height calculation derives from an averaging of the grade and total building height between the two fronts, and as a result, the building height as listed on the architectural plan is 46.3 feet or 46 feet 4 inches. When we take the grade into account, the result is that the calculation drives that number up to 49, which is a C variance. The maximum building coverage is 55%, whereas 68.8% is proposed, approximately 13,000 to 13,300 square feet. The maximum impervious coverage is 80%, and the product is compliant at 75.6%. The maximum FAR, floor area ratio, is 2:1, where it proposes 2.26:1. And I will skip the minimum accessory building requirements because of... So, to refer to the building and to orient ourselves again properly to the site, we have two frontages, there's the Richardson Street frontage and Huntington Street frontage. So, I'll take a minute. The Richardson Street frontage has got that 10-foot setback, it's the 100-foot wide portion of the site, and that is going to be the, I believe, the primary pedestrian access building. Although equally as useful, the Huntington Street frontage has pedestrian access to building floors. That portion of the site being a little narrower also houses or contains the driveway. So, vehicular traffic will be entering the site from Huntington Street, pedestrian traffic is equal opportunity, whether you walk there from Richardson Street or from Huntington, doesn't matter, it'll get you to the same building. I mentioned the below-grade parking area. So, there is a 24-foot wide driveway that provides access to the property. The requirement is 30 to 36 feet based on the number of units that are here, however, 30 to 36 feet isn't necessary for this project. We feel that a narrower driveway will suit the needs for the project, it's been proposed and built in a number of projects that we've been involved with, and we feel that that's a more appropriate driveway with the site. It reduces impervious coverage, it reduces motor vehicle surface, and we simply don't, we don't have any larger vehicles that would be entering the site that would indicate that that 30 to 36-foot width would be more appropriate. So, 24 feet is proposed, and that would bring us into the below-grade or below the structure parking area from Huntington Street. So, now, on the right-hand side of Sheet 3, this is a layout of the lower-level parking area. So, after we come down the ramp, there are a number of parking spaces along the right-hand side, and the driveway aisle everywhere except the spaces, I'm just referring to here, where there's a little number 7. There's only a very narrow area where there's a refuse room opposite the parking spaces, where the backup aisle is 22 feet. However, there's plenty of space for these cars to maneuver out of those spaces, and we believe that this is, again, appropriate for the site. So, the 24-foot wide driveway brings you into the parking area, which has 23 spaces, 11 of which are EV spaces. So, there's five along the right side as you enter, there's another five along, if you made a right, I suppose, there'd be another five along here, and there's one EV space on the handicap spot, as is required based on the ordinances that govern both EV parking and ADA parking. that govern both EV parking and AK parking requirements. So, now, that 23 parking spaces is provided, the 11 EVs provide as a credit. However, the way the math works out, the sum total of spaces, both physical and credited is 30, the requirement is 73, so the deficit is 43. Or if we go, they count as two-for-one, and you reduce the requirement, it doesn't matter, the deficit is 43 spaces. The lower-level parking area contains also the elevator and two stair quarters that will grant access to the remainder of the building. There's also various utility or maintenance spaces in that lower-level area, and also a trash compactor and a trash room, where despite the architect will describe the handling on other floors, but once the trash makes its replacement, there's a compactor that will assist in reducing the volume of refuse generated by the trash, which will then be carted up the driveway when a private courier or private hauler comes into the situation. From a landscaping perspective, we have... Sheet 6, where we're showing a variety of foundation plantings along the two fronts of the property. So, along the Richardson Street and along the Huntington Street frontages, we have various plantings. And we also have some number of trees that are located in those larger side yards. The side yards, however, due to, in part due to their narrowness, and also because we're providing six-foot board-on-board fencing between, along the property line, there are no foundation plantings in those areas. They would kind of be lost to the viewer anyway. The six-foot fence would obscure the two-to-three-foot shrubs that would be required in those areas who are asking for a waiver or variance from providing foundation plantings in these side areas. So, I flipped through a couple sheets. I will go back to... So, the topography of the site is mildly still between Richardson and Huntington. Huntington is slightly smaller, which provides, that's the opportunity, it's a better opportunity to put the driveway in there. The ramp down into the lower-level parking area is just about 8 percent, which is, we've seen much more aggressive slopes for driveways throughout the city. And then, as soon as it enters into the building and we start parking along the driveway, the slope decreases to approximately 2 percent, which is very appropriate for this area in here. And then, the grading throughout the lower level is just under 1 percent perhaps, and there's a number of floor drains located on that lower level. We're not anticipating a lot of rain in that area, but these floor drains are there in the event that there's snow melt, or oil is dirt or debris, somebody washes, the car wipes it down. That effluent will end up being collected, and there's an oil-water separator in that lower level before it is ultimately pumped out to the sanitary sewer line on Huntington Street, which is in line with a number of other applications that we've gotten permitted through the MCUA and the TWU and the DDP. The other component, another drainage feature on this site that we're seeing here is, I mentioned, rainwater isn't going to get into this lower area. And that's because we have two trench drains along the driveway, which will capture the stormwater and store it in a couple of tanks that are located underneath that driveway area, underneath the concrete driveway. And then, it is pumped back up and out to the city's, to the city right-of-way. Along Huntington Street, we have two inlets that are proposed. And, well, I'm actually kind of skipping, we'll go back to the drainage feature along the other, the side yard here, the westernly side yard of the site. A majority of the building area will be conveyed to an underground storage system which will mitigate the flow from the site based on any of the variances. The combination of this detention system on the left in the side yard and the detention system underneath the driveway will pump out the two inlets that are industry. Those inlets will be type C inlets, which are slightly unusual, in that, I think the engineering report even notes that they prefer them to be D inlets. The unusual feature about C inlet happens, the bottom of them allows for a certain amount of infiltration back into the soil within the roadway. It is DOT-approved style inlet, and the reason we're doing this is there is no city system on Huntington Street. And we believe this is a more elegant solution, rather than sending everything out to the curb line or over the sidewalk. The water that ends up in these inlets will either crack back into the ground, the water that doesn't will bubble out at the top of the inlet and flow down the street, as though we had to put it through the curb line directly. It's a better solution than just sending everything out there over the overlap. While we're on the topic of stormwater management, I can say that the requirements and the new construction engineering utility landscape standards, since this is not a major development, are met. The, rather than run through all the numbers, the pre- and post-development peak flows are lower than the post-development condition, or pre-development condition. And there's a number of other factors in that standard that are addressed. I don't believe I need to go through in excruciating detail, but we're providing appropriate solar mitigation for the project. The reason we're not a major development is we are proposing less than a quarter acre of new impervious coverage, that's a balance of the site from the existing condition, which has a number of homes, driveways, parking, et cetera, proposed site, which is predominantly built, which also actually addresses the issue of water quality, not just water rate, because the water that comes off the roof surface is considered clean and requires no treatment, whereas the ground that would come off of the surface parking lot would require drainage. There's going to be new water sewer connections, I believe both of those will be on Richardson Street, and there's going to be an electrical service on Huntington Street, which I can indicate. There's also a transformer on Huntington Street, which meets the requirements for setback relative to the property line. However, it is a variance in that it is located in a front yard, which is unfortunate.
Located where?
Located in a front yard. Due to the nature, there's mutually exclusive requirements, New Brunswick ordinance would indicate that they are not permitted in the front yard, and utility companies would indicate that they must be located within proximity to the street so that they can use a truck to pick the transformer off of the pad that's located. It will be appropriately screened, landscaped, and shielded from public view so that it won't be, it's not right on top of the sidewalk. It's actually the pad itself, which is not synonymous with the transformer, but the pad itself is 10.15 feet from the front setback on Huntington and 10.17 feet from the side path. So, we're asking for a variance from the engineering, outdoor mechanical equipment ordinance, due to the fact that it's in a front yard, despite it meeting the setback requirements from the building, from the property.
So, any other questions exist on the site? Those are locations that are essentially mandated by local authorities.
Correct. We've had a number of other applications would be vetted, numerous other proposed locations for them, and we've never been told anything other than no. They have to go on a spot where PSCNG can access them from a truck parked in the street. I'll also point out that any of the existing water, yes, other utilities will be abandoned in accordance with the appropriate standards, whether they do resonate with utility companies. I believe I've touched on the variance in waivers. I'm going to point out one that I believe is not a waiver or a variance. There is a driveway, when I indicated the driveway is located on Huntington Street side of the property, it's about five feet from the property, which I believe is compliant with the engineering standards, 8.6 for the location of the curb cut. In residential zones explicitly, is allowed to be up to three feet from the property. So, if we weren't in a residential zone, we'd be 10 feet, and we'd need a waiver, I believe, from that, since it is a residential zone, we're in excess of three, and I believe it's compliant with that. Light. We've got the lighting on... A lighting thing, which I believe just touched on briefly, where the lighting lighting is compliant with the ordinance, it's a variety of fixtures. So, we are providing lighting, wall-mounted lighting on the Huntington Street frontage. There is some security lighting along the sides of the property, so that those areas are not poorly lit during the evening hours. And we are also lighting the frontage here along this access on Richardson Street here. And then, we have ceiling mounted lighting also at the basement that is compliant with the engineering standards in the city.
And no further questions, Mr. Farrell? So, there's 30 parking spaces total?
There are 23 physical spaces, and there are, of which, 11 of them are EVs. And the way the math works out with EV parking credit, seven of those are allowed to be counted, again, so to speak, they are accounted as two-for-one, or they reduce the requirement. So, the application is considered to have functionally 30 of the 73 required spaces satisfied.
Physically.
There are 23 physically.
And I thought I read somewhere here, something about easement, I don't remember that, something, do you have a guess, or I don't get there any easement or something?
I'm not aware of an easement being proposed or one that we are changing.
Okay, maybe even, I thought I...
There, it may not be an easement, but the neighboring driveway is roughly on the property line here. And a certain number of those vehicles probably accessed through, I'll flip back to the existing condition sheet, but the neighboring property on Huntington Street here, now, the four in itself, side of the camp, would grant access to this rear lot. There is, I'm sorry, I don't remember, what is it, on the, what is this, the northern side of the site here, where the neighboring property has a driveway. That is being maintained. The driveway access on that lot is not being hinted by this application. You can actually see it is lightly shaded on Sheet 3, and the fencing that we're proposing is not on the line there, it's on the edge of that easement.
On what?
It's on the edge of that easement. So, we're providing the fencing there on easement on the property, in honoring that pencil. Thank you.
I have a few questions about the lot. Is it vacated or adorned?
I'm going to defer to the architect regarding the visual aspect and how that security and whatnot work.
Yeah, I feel like it's more than just visual.
Okay, sure.
So, then, I would be curious about the mirrors, and so that, like, when you're pulling out, can you fully see? And then, my Barry was talking about how there are these fences near someone's driveway. Will they be able to see?
Absolutely. So, we actually provide, I believe, on the... We took into account the, what we're referring to, if I may, you said in different languages like this, clear lines of sight and sight triangles. So, as we're pulling out of the driveway, you're very much in a driveway, and there's really no reason for a pedestrian to be in the driveway. And you're also about 25 feet from the property line, 23 and change, and you're 25 from the sidewalk. So, when that gate goes up, you've got two car lengths perhaps between you and the sidewalk, where you'd expect to find your next pedestrian. Also, this area has been designed such there are no obstructions between 30 inches and 10 feet in either direction, measured eight feet back from the property line and 25 feet outward directions. So, you will certainly have plenty of clear sight on this property, and the fencing also ends at the building corner. It doesn't continue up all along the side of the driveway. So, as you're leaving the site, there is ample sight for vehicular traffic.
Then, inside, for maneuverability, 22 feet, would there need to be mirrors?
I don't, in my opinion, it may be. One of the things here is that this area is generally fairly open, actually. So, despite the fact that there's this sort of shaded area that I'm gesturing to here on the downstream side, there's only one car, and then, there's a parking stall. So, if there are cars driving in and around that area, if that car is pulling out, you'll see them as you're coming down the driveway. It's one, yeah, it's one big car. It's not a wall along that section. Also, this, with the exception of this little space here between these two parking stalls and the trash room, and on the opposite side, these two live in the trash room, the whole area is designed to be 24-foot wide drive aisles with 9-by-18 foot parking spaces, which are all very compliant with not only city standards, but industry standards and that. I'm not sure that mirrors would be required, although the applicant should choose to post mirrors for their own or for their tenants' benefits. They may choose to do so.
Yeah, the transformer, sorry, you organized that based on the first... Okay, I totally see how the transformer is covered from view if you're walking or driving past. What about for those that are living in the building?
So, in the, if you're on the first, well, that room, the transformer is going to be probably between six and eight feet tall, and it can also be painted, it can be screened in some fashion. If you look directly above it and decide that your best view is to stare straight down, you're going to see the top of the transformer. I think that if you're on the second, third, fourth, third building, there's plenty of open space, you're not visually obstructed by that transformer.
Mr. Chair, just on the transformer issue, the architectural plans seem to show some sort of screening on the frontage of the transformer, maybe not the clearest thing on the engineering plans, so we'll just ask you to work with our office.
Absolutely.
Just to clarify some of those things, and if there's a way to just beef up the landscaping and shrugs and things like that around all the sides of the transformer, we'll ask you to do that.
Absolutely.
Yes, you were talking about the driveway entrance. Are there any kind of speed bumps or speed bumps at the entrance, or?
No.
Do you guys not make that necessary?
I don't believe it prudent or necessary to provide speed bumps in that area. Firstly, because when you're driving in, you're going to be turning, there's a turning movement first, then you're going to go about 30 feet between the curb and the front of the building, or there's going to be a gate, and then you can continue on from there.
Okay, there's no issue. Mr. Farrell, I may have stopped your question for the answer, but if those 11 EV spaces aren't used, are they going to be available for the other tenants to use? Or have to keep them open?
The operation of those spaces, I'm going to defer to the attorney. I believe that they can be...
Yeah, they're not the only reason for EV spaces here. There are all the spaces.
You don't have enough EV cars to push them all through the car. Okay, fine. All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Can you please state your next or last name for the record?
Jason Watts, W-T-Z.
Do you start from the top of the list and then we'll hear the truth?
I do.
Mr. Watts, have you been before?
No. No.
A little, a little problem. Mr. Watts, you're a licensed professional architect with San Diego, is that correct?
Correct.
In that capacity, you're familiar with the application tools, particularly with regard to building design and the architectural features of the building?
Correct.
Could you give the, for the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Sure. Practicing licensed architect for, since 2000. Sure. Uh, practicing licensed architect for, since 2008. Licensed both in New Jersey and in Pennsylvania. I hold a five-year professional bachelor of architecture degree from Temple, Temple University of Art and Architecture. I provided public testimony in throughout the state of New Jersey, Brunswick, first time, provided testimony here, and then also nationally in other jurisdictions like Charlotte, Fayetteville, Arizona, I C, amongst others. I've worked in Old County apartments and design for pretty much the majority of my career. Um, I understand the complexities of projects, not just from ability to design perspective, but also the profound impacts on the surrounding context in which they land. So a lot of sensitivity is going to block the process on how to approach this project.
Can you help out with this? Thank you. Uh, Jason, if you could then please, rather than be asking specific questions, if you could go through generally the architectural components of the project, everybody's anxious to see who your nice cover brings.
Um, yes, so I'll try to feedback on some of the discussions already in fact from Frank Farrell. Uh, as I can see a lot of it, probably a few relations. As Frank noted, um, the building sites itself, as you made, due to the complexity of the partial arrangements. Um, so we tried as best we possibly could to set it in, you know, with, with sense, somewhat uniform. Uh, I will say that in addition to some of the concern about the easements and setbacks, uh, the building, due to the number of occupants, the size of the required, have NFT 13 fire protection system, uh, fully automated, um, as opposed to 13R, which is a residential scale, 13 is on the commercial grade side of things. So there's also a uniform fire protection that happens throughout the building, including the parking garage. Um, the building itself, on the lower level, this access from Huntington Street, as Frank had noted, that is due to topographical change. So it makes sense to have the parking garage access from now to take advantage of the topo, as it drops off and hide the parking as best as we possibly could. That allows us to have the underground parking garage where we can locate a trash compactor and also recycling room that's connected to a vertical chute that has a trash room located all the way above, which you will see later in, in provisions as I defer. Uh, all of our primary utilities are located down in the garage and basement. Electrical being here, located immediately adjacent to the transformer in back of the property. Anticipating water to be coming from Richardson Street, the water room here as well. Um, we've located a white parking here, we've provided striping throughout the parking garage for pedestrian access, um, which also back and validates into Frank's note about openness of the parking garage. Uh, so it's not just about the openness and visual transparency, but it's also about clear pathways within the parking garage. The elevator does have an elevator lobby, invested build with doors for security access reasons. I mean, for the applicant to talk about, um, there's access control, sometimes really over term swaps, you know, different things. There's a lot of entry systems that are out there. Ultimately, the goal is to access control the entire building. While we're talking about the parking garage, you can ask your question that you had about the actual door itself. So while, um, security is always a big issue, uh, so it will not be an R, it will be a door. Uh, while we have chosen step door, the intent is that the aesthetic of the door fits within the overall design, the context of the design as well as fits with the neighborhood. The door is designed currently, and as the applicant desires to be high speed roll up. So to your question about queue and the depth of the driveway, the high speed roll up door, which is also access controlled, there's a couple of ways to do that. We have not made that determination yet, so, so I will allow the door to roll up in a short duration of time, meaning the queue of cars is reduced. So as you go up to the ground floor, which is, but the front entry located is situated along Richardson Street, which is here. Um, the, we located a corner vestibule and entry, meaning building entry here, which you also see here, which is the closest side of the property in the building to the campus. Uh, for the applicant to talk about accessibility to the campus and then also from the campus. Uh, the door being located here, the front door being located here, provides that maximum access for residents. The vestibule itself, you can see there's a series of doors. Uh, the front doors are access controlled, the primary lobby doors from the airlock and vestibule are also access controlled. And then a lot of new systems will be able to delivery, as well as package delivery. It, there's a lot of advancements that have been made. One of the benefits of having to work internationally, which we see a lot of, a lot of, there are access specific controls that allow for USPS as well as Amazon, FedEx and such to have access direct to the mailroom, which is why we have another set of doors here to provide clear cut security so that those who are delivering parcels of packages as well as mail can get directly to the mailroom and directly to the package room. Inside of the mailroom are USPS lock, uh, you know, compliant lockers, parcel boxes on several, as well as, um, either Luxor or Amazon hub lockers for smaller packages. So, and those are in addition to the large package room that happens back here off of the elevator area of residence, uh, which again, locked down on, of course. Um, so access control is a huge thing, and we want to make sure that it's done nicely. So a lot of this lobby is intended to be transparent. So the building itself, a lot of the outside of the street, sort of the context actually becomes a little sort of lazy, becomes a backdrop to the inside of the lobby. Uh, looking at some utility and mechanical rooms, get your first glimpse of a large scale trash room, which holds billy bins, 96 gallon billy bins. We size this based on calculations of number of occupants for recycling. Um, we'll be cut down for boxes. And then we have a large diameter trash chute with, with an access hood that goes directly down to the dumpster. The dumpster, the compactor inside of that refuge room has two cubic yard dumpsters, uh, so that when one is completely full compacted and ready for pickup, whoever is maintaining that onsite can take one dumpster off, put another one on so that the trash is going, there's still a delay management system. Part of, uh, part of, I'm sure a question that will come up is, how do the dumpsters, when they're completely full, get out to the street? A lot of these systems actually come with hydraulic attachments to go onto the dumpster so that one person can walk it up to the street when he gets picked up, walk it back down, and they can do it under control, not to risk not having to get out of the cans and run loose. The rest of the ground floor here is made up consistently of units. And as you get upstairs, if you get upstairs, the floor plate becomes prototypical in the sense that we've got all units that surround uh, central operational core of elevator refuge, elevator trash rooms. And adjacent to that is what we're providing as flexible workspace. So either for the support of studying, social gathering, um, group projects and working, support of education, things that go, that happen, especially with the ever evolving learning environment between online classes as well as just, you know, everyday group projects. Then we've also provided a more private workspace that shows here as a little bit as a lantern and an entry to the bill, to the building, or capital would be an entry. So on Richardson Street, um, building is comprised of a mix of material. And we did canvas of the context of the neighborhood. And we wanted to make sure that materials were familiar while at the same time, high quality, long life cycle, easily maintained, and didn't show wear and tear immediately. So, uh, what we have is a mix of brick, different colors of brick, different colors of fiber cement, and a mix of fiber cement between fiber cement paneling systems, um, that are both colored as well as monotone, wood book, uh, fiber cement paneling, and then also fiber, uh, fiber cement paneling. And as you go around the building, we brought some of these elements into the backside and then introduced a horizontal lap siding here and here as these veins protrude. And on the sides of the building, wrapped the corners for, um, both primary corners and primary views and vistas from said corners from Huntington and Richardson Street. I think one of the things that's elusive in the elevations is because they're flat, is the dynamic of the in and the out of the building. And I think there's, uh, this is, this is forward on the prop, uh, five feet, a little less than five feet off the property line here on this side, and then the building turns back, and then this is far beyond. This section here is pronounced, this sits back, and then this sits back partially. And we've got all fiber cement with accent colors of red to tie into the front elevation and the rear elevation. I think one of the, one of the challenges is the politicality that has two fronts. And how do we address those two fronts? And the two fronts are very different from one another in the overall context of the, of the neighborhood. Huntington Street, Richardson Street are two very different streets here. Uh, Richardson Street is a little bit more commercial avenue, Huntington is a little more quiet. So, uh, what we're trying to do is on Richardson Street create a, um, an architectural massing and proportionality to it that, um, feels right for what's happening in other sections of Richardson Street. While on the backside of Huntington Street, try to break down the mass so that you can see, you know, four stories, two adjacent, um, properties and structures that are there. And by changing mass and material, that's also a visual way to help queue, you know, different proportionality and, um, scale and some adjacent structures that are existing. Uh, we are treating, again, because of access control, we have the ability to use the stair tower. So we are treating the stair tower in this, this backside as a secondary entry as well as providing parking signage so that people understand that this is 11 Richardson Street and this is the access to 11 Richardson Street. So again, great way of finding, uh, provide clarity of way of finding. On, in terms of the building and the setbacks, we do, uh, you can see it here, you can still start to see it here as well as, as well as here. So the building itself, uh, for the, the majority of the front half of the building coming from Richardson Street inward to the property, uh, does step back so that we're a little less than 10 feet here and here, and then steps back out. Um, there was a, strategically, the intent was to, strategically, we picked a place that made sense in terms of unit arrangement, building massing, as well as the structure that's down below. One of the complexities of a multifamily building, sort of understanding how the structure vertically stacks itself and then carries down. So we had to be very wary of, in terms of parking, where we have columns, um, where we did one column, how we had to further straighten parking to the parking count, um, or, and or the accessways and the drive aisles. We had to be very, very strategically wary of those choices to deliberately set the building back. So we, uh, we came back to this corner and then here, it steps back twice. Um, and then you can see here, uh, this side is more pronounced, and then this steps back, and this is the property that's here, uh, 2210. And then, um, here, this steps back and then it becomes more pronounced. So one of the lar, uh, knowing this is the first project going through the public avenue overlay, um, there is no real precedence. And I think that was one of the unique challenges of this project was to, uh, provide a, a good basis for design. Uh, if you, or the applicant spoke earlier about the density of the project, of weight density, the rate amount of students in one space, the right size of the building. That is exactly what we tried to embody in the overall massing, material arrangement, as well as understand at the streetscape. So very intently, we were providing a horizontal band that exists so we're top of all, all the common area spaces on the ground floor and, um, to creating that pedestrian streetscape engagement purposefully. That would have download for security reasons, would also be compliant with code underneath of it, and as well as we're going to be required for exit paths and exit pathways within the site. Uh, but it will comply with, like, you know, not providing light pollution, things there and that could require. But this is deliberate, um, because this provides scale at the streets. Uh, and then we continue that scale across as the materials come through the rip. And then we pick the scale up here, and then we, the chains of material here as well as this connection, this vertical piece here, tying all these together with the lighter colored piece at the top is purposely to create that visual impression of the building stepping and disappearing as you go up, to bring the scale of the building down. I think we understand that it's a large building in, in giving the fact that the, uh, the context of the site, there was currently houses to the left and to the right, knowing, again, first project, but most likely this, this will become the, uh, the launchgate potential catalyst of a lot of change in this section of New Brunswick. We wanted to make sure that we set good tone and, and play nicely. So, um, we are getting a lot of the building, um, and the way that it masses together specifically to, um, the elevations to, to pay homage, respect, consideration to the street while understanding that there are certain requirements of a multifamily building. Um, one of the things that doesn't show good plans, per se, operationally, uh, is noted in the panel review comments about the stair tower protruding up. Uh, that was actually purposeful. Um, E-Track will be located on the roof of this building. The condensing units will be on the roof, it will be running power. Uh, all the units will have in-house air handling, furnaces. Um, so everything will be internal to the building, nothing on the side, nothing protrude. Uh, that allows for higher energy savings, more energy compliance. And part of the reason for the stair towers coming up to the top of the roof is to allow if a condensing unit goes down, instead of having to lift that or carry that down uh, through a roof hatch or potentially over the side of the building, uh, the stair tower allows for a mechanical contractor to basically attach one to a hand truck and bring it down the stairs to get to the elevator. So it's a safe way of changing out and rekeying the building. We should do that on a lot of buildings specifically for that. So that's why the, uh, the stair towers are popping up above. Make sure that I got two questions. So we are providing signage, building signage, um, on both sides of the building on Richardson Street and on Huntington Street. In the R5A zone, 17.06, .060, um, it does call for, uh, the allowance for, um, one facade in the R5A zone to have 12 square feet, and then it allows a nameplate at nine inches by eight inches, uh, which is effectively 72 inches square. Um, I think the importance of that saving is that it's in the R5 zone, it's a residential scale. And what we're talking about is the difference between, um, you know, a residential scale and a multifamily scale, and having to transcend that and understanding the requirements of that. Wayfinding is inherently important, just generally speaking, and they understand where you are, which the building you're at is also important. It's a, it's a, an understated level of security as well as confidence for pedestrians, the students who are living here. Uh, some may be local-ish to New Jersey, some may be coming from out of state. And I think having peace of mind or being able to see, willing to see the name from down the street is very, very important. So we are proposing, um, a sign and asking for, uh, for various on the signage here, as well as down here to denote a nameplate, um, address, and then where you're living. And this is for 11, uh, Richardson Street. And the total is that we have two signs that equal up to 31.59 square feet, total, between the two. Um, on this elevation, and the intent is that they could be backlit, they wouldn't be, um, they wouldn't be internally lit, so they would have a halo effect. Uh, so it would be very subtle, very, very subtle, but it's enough to create legibility from a distance without being overpowered. On the backside, we are sharing parking here. Parking access sign is here, sign, you can't necessarily see here with the screen, but, uh, that is a total of 9.55. that is a total of 9.55 square feet on the Huntington Street side. You know, yeah, we're in a new position where we have two front facades and we have to treat them at the same way. I think what's really nice about this elevation very specifically is the fact that you can really start to see that this house, whereas in the elevation, again, I think this is the difference between renderings and understanding the renderings and the massing of the building in a three-dimensional perspective versus a flat elevation. As you can see, the pitch of this roof, the step up of this dormery gable is very much in line with the overall mass. So this doesn't feel as if it's an overpowering element on the street as opposed to what it would look like and understood and understanding so in a flat elevation. It's the sort of same thing that's happened here on Richardson Street. We have a relief here, this is the driveway that Mr. Farrell was sitting in, is hugging onto the property line currently. So this provides a natural buffer because this would be required for access. And then on the other side, as the building steps back, so then just shy of 10 feet from here to here, it is compliant or in consideration of the fact that this, this front facade of this existing house and existing living property is in line with where, generally aligned with where this steps back. So we are creating that relief along Richardson Street by taking the building back again. Like it just strategically deciding where that stops was all important to effectively the verticality of the structure that that sets out. So the utility transformer, we have spoken about, but closing it off more with you guys and Mr. Farrell to ensure that it is, that it is shrouded and covered and screened properly. And again, in terms of materialities, the list that we are including is first, let's break the air, aluminum fiber cement, you have some lap sliding, fiber cement handled, aluminum reveals, fiber cement access panels with styro aluminum reveals. The windows most likely will be vinyl, but we are working, yeah, with the client color options so that the windows, they integrate with the surrounding colors. That provides a higher polished finishing quality. I think one of the things that's really, really nice about this design is that nighttime, and we should have done a night rendering for this because it would be really pronounced a different, but this here becomes a lantern in the middle of Richardson Street. And I think that's something that's really, really amazing. It's a very subtle lantern, but it's, again, it becomes its point of origin and point of place so that people looking at industry and students represent it and they know it's their building. And I think also too, it's, because of the glazing, the building is intending to open itself outward into the street and not close itself off. Too many times, you see a lot of multifamily buildings, it's just punched windows, there might be some articulation along the street and then that kind, that kind of disappears and goes away. I think up above, the intent here is not to have that, the intent here is to make the streets, this Huntington, Richardson Street open itself and feel like it's open enough[817.49]
Part of the building code is also you require me to meet in off of the for just to meet in off of the off of the side and here this parrot does pick up by the edge production that's complaining with.
So there is an assembly space for the residents on the roof. They want to go up and hang out up there?
Yes.
And then the elevator will take you to the roof?
Correct.
Okay. Just one question I don't know if it's really important. Getting back to the easement on the side of the property, is that something that the applicant can waive their rights to? Because basically it was a cross-axis easement. You're no longer using the driveway. Just thinking ahead, if we have an applicant comes in next door and you guys have an easement you don't even use, can we, you know, now is now the opportunity to get rid of it so that it doesn't encumber somebody else's property for some reason?
Everybody's looking at it.
I think that the easement is the primary value of my neighbor, not this property. It's only about two feet on this property.
It just says common driveway and they both use it.
Right, so is the, to attempt to rephrase the question, is the question for the applicant to relinquish their common rights, so to speak, onto, onto the neighboring law?
Correct.
Because you don't, that property no longer needs the rest of that driveway.
Is there any reason why we would need to maintain that?
I can't think of one standing here.
Yeah, I think it was probably identified as a common easement because that's the way typically lawyers correct those things. The reality is easements to the benefit of the other property owner.
It is now, but when it was created, it actually served your lot as well as theirs. We're just trying to make sure that they're not, right, we just want to make sure they're not encumbered, that's it.
Yeah, I would see that. There's no reason not to relinquish that. It wouldn't be used as a driveway.
Agreed.
And we have further relations with our paper. How do you do that?
How big is the signage offices being used for here? Doesn't mean like, doesn't look very big, but there's a comment asking why there shouldn't be a lower, smaller sign on near the entrance door.
So there's two. There's one that's located up here, then there is a smaller address in building signage location here. Part of Are Your Littings branding is effectively what will run red color. That's consistent with the, the off-campus buildings that they design, build and deliver. So we keep continuity of that as well as that showing up down here. And the, there's a red door currently on Bartlett Street, so we're bringing someone red into the signage because this is all people's storefronts and so it really doesn't have the opportunity for the same red door that exists in 12 Bartlett again, you know. The applicant suggested 12 Bartlett was done in one time period and this is a lot of lessons learned from learning and operating and then trying to provide, transcend what the intent of the compound. So there's a small sign here, a letter which indicates an address, building signage, building location, and then building brand, Are Your Living up here.
This time I have a call, Mr. Matt Sekler for testimony.
Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Matthew Sekler, that's S E C K L E R.
Do you swear a firm title or do you have a letter?
Yes, I do.
Aren't there dispositions for parking and traffic assessment? I think Matt's been here.
I've been here in the past and my licenses are still in good shape.
Matt, I, you believe in the traffic and parking assessment on behalf of the applicant for this application?
Correct. I was dated November twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Could you give us just a brief overview of how you went about conducting that and you give us your conclusions and recommendations?
Absolutely. I think when you're looking at this application from a traffic and parking perspective, it's important to remember two things. One, the intended audience, obviously students. Two, its location. We heard from the applicant in terms of this location and anyone who's familiar with the amount of bus services on College Avenue, transportation options running a building in this building that happens to be a student is like living right on top of the path in Hoboken or Jersey City. The transportation options are immense in terms of being able to get to where you want to get to if you're a student, whether it's classrooms, let's walk into the Alexander Library. It's only a five-minute walk to get to the train station if you want to get out of town. This is an ideal location to have a site that it can take advantage of transportation options. We also have bike racks in the building, which I've been spoken to earlier by the earlier witnesses. So again, when doing a traffic and parking assessment, it's important to remember where this is versus if we're building this building, you know, six miles away, you know, in, in the scatway somewhere, this is looking in a spot that clearly allows students or any residents in this building to take advantage of the transportation infrastructure. So in terms of trip generation, this is a very low trip generator, again, because of the jar of people that be drawn to live in a building like this or living here because they could walk to the classes, walk to the bus and commute that way. We even estimated, I think on the high side, about one car coming out of this driveway every five or six minutes during peak hours. That's usually kind of national numbers for student housing. Obviously, you know, Rutgers continually gets, you know, credit for being one of the, you know, best campuses for transportation option. So again, you're comparing, let's say Rutgers here to maybe Indiana and Bloomington. This side, I would imagine from a national perspective, will be under that one new trip every five minutes or so during peak hours. The book values would tell us this side would generate some traffic. For parking, and again, this is, you know, clearly this is not an application that all of a sudden goes to snap its finger and fix all the street parking that exists, issues that exist in this area. But I think it's important to remember that there is existing buildings on the site, there are existing tenants in this building, and they do have parking permits to park on the street. And I believe we've indicated that there are twenty-two permits that are associated with the buildings that are being removed, that will be taken offline and again, allow the potential for other people to utilize those spaces on the street. In terms of parking in the building, really we looked at this from two perspectives. One is those kind of national numbers, where it's kind of the industry saying for parking demand for student housing. And typically, student housing would be looking at about one, one parking space every ten bedrooms up to one parking space every five bedrooms. So a building like this, that would be in a range of seven to twenty-one parking spaces being needed if you look at kind of that national look at kind of student housing. And again, we see that at the total of thirty spaces, twenty-three actual spaces and seven to credits. So we do fit that kind of industry standard for what you'd expect for a building like this to need for parking. And secondly is, we have on-the-ground information from the Bartlett Street application or Bartlett Street project in terms of their parking ratios, and this basically aligns exactly what they see in that level of demand. I think it's important because really the, the fix for downtown traffic, new runs of traffic, new runs of parking issues is not to overbuild your parking and kind of encourage that it's to bring more cars when they don't need it. It's to have the right amount of parking for these developments so you're not having people basically just, oh, I have a car anyway, so I'll just drive to a seven-eleven or I'll just drive to the library or I'll drive to this library. One of the other libraries, you want to really find that right mix of just the right amount of parking. And again, modeling this parking supply after the ratios they had at Bartlett or what we're seeing at Bartlett, I think is a proper design from a traffic perspective. In terms of access in and out of the site, I think, you know, again, we consolidate the number of access points. Again, this is, you know, a mix and match of various driveways that exist around these two streets. We have one singular driveway. I believe we've right-sized that driveway. I think we are asking for relief as it relates to the driveway size. But again, the driveway size here is, is, I think, the appropriate balance between one that's not too wide, that may hamper pedestrian safety versus one and still is one that is compliant from an industry standard in terms of vehicular access in and out of the site. Again, this is not a high-turnover site. We don't expect to be frequent traffic coming out of this driveway. Again, because the site is so well-sighted and suited to take advantage of transportation options out there. So again, from a traffic perspective, I think you really need to look at this location specifically and intended users. You look at the fact they have similar sites in the city nearby that have parking ratios that are, that are being utilized at similar to what we're designing here. And again, very old traffic and we're trying to take advantage of those other modes of transportation, bike racks, the bus, again, still walking distance to the train if you want to get out of town. And I think that would show that this site could not create a substantial way to get back to a traffic perspective.
I know there are questions from that. Thank you. This time I'll go by my own witness, Mr. Josh Eckert.
Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Sure. Joshua Eckert, E C K A R D.
Do you swear a firm title or do you have a letter?
Yes, I do.
Josh, you are a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
I am, yes.
You also licensed architect.
I am, yeah, yeah. You usually get to present a pretty picture with the amount of stuff with the.
If you could, then could you please give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Sure. I'm a professional planner in the state of New Jersey since two thousand twelve, a registered architect in the state since two thousand eight. Also AICP last year in two thousand twenty-three. I presented before local boards, township and borough boards across the state of New Jersey, Camden, Zanaher, Maraway, Keansburg, just all, all of the places.
I would also, who was that, my question? All right, Josh, what I'd like you to do is give us as best you can an analysis of the various variances that were asked before. We recognize you have one D variance, we have a series of C variances, and then the odds and ends with regards to signage and such. If you could, give us a general overview and if, if you could, please give us the benefit of your analysis in support of those variances.
Sure, sure. The first one today, the reason we're here tonight is the D variance, D four variance for the F A R, the floor area ratio. That's the biggest one that we have right now. The allowable permitted is two point oh and the proposed is two point six one, again, which is the D variance. That's why we're here tonight. Basically, the, the primary looking at that one is screening the variance does not substantially impair the intent, purpose of the zone plan. So when you're looking at it, you have to see what the intent of the overall zone plan is. The intent for the College Avenue district is this overlay zone is to foster development of student housing in the area that's suited for it. It allows for easy natural redevelopment of student one and two-family homes into modern student housing, you know, walkable, transit-rich environment. And that's exactly what we're proposing tonight, I guess. Mr. Kelso mentioned and all the other testimonies is described. The proposed use of modern student housing, some of the elements that contributed to the higher F A R include sports spaces for students. That's, if it's just a regular apartment building, sometimes you don't have the larger areas for those types of things. That contributes to the modern student housing. The use of building massing are consistent with other recent projects, such as the Bartlett Street. And in my opinion, granting the variance does not cause a substantial detriment to the zone plan nor to the public. Similar proposed uses is surrounded by residential uses already, primarily student uses, just of a, of a lower kind of building typology. The site's very close, as Mr. Sekler had mentioned, it's very close in proximity to the College Avenue University. Abastadory, the residents or students will be walking everywhere. That will also discuss that as, as it relates to the parking. But as far as granting the variance for the use of the F A R, that's also contributing to it as well. Again, the proposed use is creating additional student housing, which is the overall intent of the, of the district. The building massing also is mitigated by the architectural design. So we're allowed a low and mid-rise building. Mid-rise building is defined as four to six stories. We could go up to six stories, but we chose to drop down to four. Not only that, dropping it down to four in that the overall design of the project is the base middle and top, so it feels like even lower than a four-story building, which is being designed a different way as well. As far as the positive criteria for the F A R variance, it aligns with the two thousand twenty-two City of New Brunswick master plan in multiple ways, particularly the land use element goals, which has maintained the character of existing residential neighborhoods and are appropriate while also recognizing the changing circumstances in certain areas of the city. So that goal of master plan is indicative of the project here as well. Expand housing supply for the residents of the housing markets and student housing is, is what we're proposing here as well. And the housing plan element as well. It ensures the, another goal is to ensure the supply of housing keeps up with the demand for new homes. Student housing or housing affiliated with a university targeted towards student population is a specific goal that's in the master plan that it needs towards that. So between the, the positive and negative criteria, balancing those two, I believe the granting of the F A R variance is, is working. With regards to the parking, the parking is, is another variance. This isn't a D variance, this is a C variance. As Mr. Sekler and Mr. Farrell have both testified as to the reasons why we have given or we're requesting a specific amount of parking that we are. The required is sixty-six, we're proposing twenty-three, which is a typical C variance. Again, it matches the, the positive and negative criteria, the balancing of those as well. In that it meets the intent of a walkable, which remains a rich environment, which again is a specific line I put within the goal of the intent of the, the area. Again, it's modern student housing, the traffic and parking assessment showed a true parking ratio or true need of seven to twenty-one spaces. We're proposing twenty-three physical spaces. There's a precedent for this as well in the twelve Bartlett Street. The applicant manages that, sees exactly what the, the parking demand is there on a daily basis and that was the, the big reason why we are proposing the twenty-three spaces that we have now. Again, for the positive criteria, it meets many of the twenty-two land use, or New Brunswick master plan goals for affiliated land use elements. Circulation plan element, which is improved pedestrian bicycle circulation and safety, again, promoting a walkable community, which is, is an element of that goal. As well as the housing plan element, again, parking requirements for new housing can increase the cost of building the housing, which may make it less likely that any newer housing would be affordable. That's a specific goal just listed in the, the master plan as well. And another reason for balancing the positive and negative criteria for the project. Another variance that we have, this is the building height. The primary reason for granting it with the building height is because we want the nine-foot tall ceilings in the building. So we want this to, to work well for the residents. We're about a little over four feet above what we need to be. Visually, it's not really that dramatic at all. Again, that's a C variance. We're not asking for an over ten percent D variance on that. Some of the other ones, the building coverage, the lot widths, the side yard setbacks have all had testimony. Basically, a lot of that comes from the fact that we are at sixty-five feet on the back of the property. And what you're doing in a modern student housing building has a unit corridor, a unit that ends typically about sixty feet. We're squeezing it even more, so we end up with the four and a half, or four point four seven on one side, a little over four feet on the other side. So that's, it's kind of a physical requirement of, of the property for those as well. And again, they meet the positive criteria for various land use element goals as well as housing element goals. And I don't see any detriment to the, to the public or any, it does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan as well. A couple of other ones that we have, again, there's, there were quite a few, but we went through the building height, the building coverage, lot width, side yard setbacks, rear setbacks. All are basically the same justifications for all those, primarily because of the, of the site. The driveway width, Mr. Farrell had discussed why we're going with twenty-four feet, seven thirty to thirty-six feet. Transformer location, again, there's a specific reason why that is in the front yard versus hidden. We're trying to hide that as much as we can with landscape buffering as well. The parking aisle width, again, it's just a little area within there. We can work with the township to, or the borough to mitigate that as needed. Signage, we're asking for three signs, like two are allowed, as well as the overall size due to the architectural nature of the building. And I believe another one was the foundation planings on the side was landscape are required along the side, but we're mitigating that by having that. Again, with the, the reduced four or five feet, doesn't make a whole lot of sense with the planings in there, especially since they're beyond of that as well, so. Because of, I believe that's the, the list of all the variances and waivers as well. And again, in my professional planning opinion, I think this project meets many of the goals and objectives associated with the two thousand twenty-two New Brunswick master plan. And I hope the board takes that into account.
Thank you. Do you have other questions?
Number four, professionals have any question?
Yes.
Did you say that it was going to be affordable housing or is it the current market?
No, it's, it's just, it's not affordable, being a affordable, it's more just the developer can afford it or just the overall cost of the project. That's why if you put a whole bunch of parking in, the cost of that parking doesn't, it, it's just the cost of that has not allowed for many projects to be built just because of sheer cost of a parking structure and a lot of parking basically designed to be used.
Yeah, are most of the Are Your Living properties like affordable or are they like current to a market rate?
I have to defer.
Let me, let me answer that before we begin this discussion. It's not affordable housing in the sense that I think you're referring to. The units are not income-restricted, they're not funded with tax credits, they're not designed to be a set aside of ten percent or twenty percent of affordable housing. I think the reference is trying to make the units from a market rate perspective be as affordable as possible. Obviously, the applicant is wants to be competitive in the marketplace, but sometimes you market yourself out if you overdevelop a site, too much parking, the cost of the structure of the parking. I think that was the reference that was being made. But in terms of, I think, your reference to affordable housing, particular buildings that are built specifically for undergraduate student housing do not lend themselves to affordable housing because of the income requirements. Even though they're income-restricted, there's still income requirements and many of the undergraduates that are living here are not employed as full-time students. And they're not, so they wouldn't be qualified for affordable housing units on their own. Now, potentially, if they were getting subsidized by parents or whatever, they may be able to be looked at as affordable, but they wouldn't qualify for affordable housing based upon other income and not their own. So, because I know we had this question on the other application and when we talk about set aside for affordable housing, you usually are in larger projects, as you know, because of the developers being able to combine tax credit financing with equity financing. And this would and would not be a project that would qualify for just specifically designed for student housing. I hope that answers your question.
Do you have a question?
I have a question, but I don't know actually for you because you said that it could be four to six stories, but if it's six stories, then it's way over the height. I'm confused.
I think he was making reference to the fact of what would be permitted in the, in the open.
Okay.
For the building, they have a mission.
Yeah, it's strictly a destination.
Okay.
Any questions?
That completes our presentation.
The open up to public comment right now. The annual public, would you come forward, Charlie? All right, please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Charlie Gradil, K R A T O B I L.
You swear a firm title or do you have a letter?
I did.
You're on. Thanks.
Good evening, board. As stated, Charlie Gradil, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, I'm recording the meeting, or at least this portion of it, for the New Brunswick Today YouTube channel. I, I wanted to ask actually if I could hear what the requirements are to rent from Are Your Living? Would the applicant could share what their standards are for?
I don't see the relevance in that to a site plan application.
Okay, it was testified to that there are requirements, right? There's income requirements to live in their buildings. Is that, was that not testified to?
Again, it's not relevant to the site plan, so the specifics were not testified to. If you wanted to ask a question of my client, maybe you could send it an email and we'd probably be able to answer the question.
I just don't see why, why it couldn't be addressed here since.
Because it's not relevant to a site plan application. The fact that you want it is not the same thing as what's required.
Just pulling out the, it was mentioned that there are requirements. I think it's a fair question to follow up and say, what are those requirements? Just to be clear, it's been referred to as student housing many times, but the developer won't be making it exclusively student housing, right? They won't discriminate against non-students.
No, you couldn't do that legally. What, it's designed and where it's located as a property matter, it's going to be student.
Designed for and marketed to students.
You couldn't exclude some of them.
Okay, just, just making sure. And I, I'm sorry if I missed this, could I get the mix of the units? How many, how many, any studios, any one bedrooms?
Thirty-three studios, seven two-bedrooms, four three-bedrooms, and then four.
Okay, and are there any, can you, can you give me an approximate cost to rent, any of the units?
Again, it's not relevant to the site plan. I don't know if, I don't, they probably even haven't made that determination. It'll be market rate, whatever that is at the time, but we're, we're at least two years out, so.
Okay, understood. Is there any approximate figure that can be given at this time?
I didn't show you. That's not relevant.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just going through the chairs. That's what I'm supposed to ask the chairs questions.
Exactly, it's not relevant.
Okay, and you're agreeing with, with Mr. Kelso?
Two years, two years from now, Charlie, the whole thing changes.
Understood, understood. And, and I just wanted to say I, I do very much appreciate the presentation, witnesses and, you know, what, what was presented today. I also appreciate the question from the board member and some of the other questions that were raised. I think we are in a housing crisis and affordability is paramount, so, you know, I for one am concerned to see projects go ahead without any affordable housing component. I get it that this is marketed for students, but students aren't always well-off and, you know, many students have to, have to work to meet the rising cost of tuition, meet the rising cost of housing, you know, transportation and, and, you know, I'm concerned about some of the rents I'm seeing in other, other buildings and that's why I asked the questions I asked tonight. I appreciate the board member asking the questions that she asked, so thank you for bearing it out.
The other member of the public, cabinet comment? If they're saying that, we will close that portion of our discussion. Any member of the board have any glaring?
I think it's a positive to the area. I see, you know, my daughter lived in that area, which was, which was a simple impact for her. I think more supply we bring to the market may affect the price of housing.
And also I live three blocks away off of Jefferson, you know, so I can see the volume of students that are even moving in our neighborhood now. And, you know, the quality of the housing was nice, but when the older, you know, community passed away and it's sold to investors, it can become a real eyesore.
So it's safer than some of the old houses.
And this won't be an eyesore compared to other communities.
I appreciate the safety factors and I think the lit-up sign, I know maybe not everyone has been in a place where they don't know where they are and you just kind of like look up and you can find your way. I think that's a really helpful safety feature, I know it's not necessarily, I know some people think it's too big, but I think it's really helpful to people. That's when you can walk between places before you look up and you can find your way. And all the following, it means very much.
Just one question for the developer. So based on the previous project you did on Bartlett, you say you learned things from it. Besides what is required by law, what are some of the positives that this, you're bringing to here?
Well, simply one of the major things was the mailroom. I mean, Amazon and the delivery of packages has really kind of taken over. So the mailroom in this building is substantially larger. When we built the last mailroom, it was, it was disproportionately oversized. Everybody thought we were crazy building it that way and now we're, we just kind of got lucky that we built it that big and in this building, we're building it even larger.
Yes.
Yeah, we just see that. More controlled access, so like the roll-top door on the garage, they don't really have any problems. Ten years, I think, there was one bicycle stolen. So that's probably not the worst track record for ten years, but I think if we had the roll-top door, we would have had zero bicycles stolen. So thanks.
You don't really get homeless in that area.
No, we don't. Yeah, I mean, I live around the corner and that's more of a downtown thing that doesn't really happen over there in, in that neighborhood. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're on.
You're on? So far, I've heard some nice positive comments. I haven't heard from everybody yet. I'm not, I'm, that's not your responsibility to do that, but I would like to get, is there a way to get a sense?
You want to confer with your client?
No, I mean, I just reserve the right, if for some reason there are two negative votes, to have a seventh member vote with the option.
You got to ask, okay. Kind of out of the ordinary, huh?
Yeah, otherwise, no, it's not, but it's not, it's not, I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic here.
I think it would be best to make the decision whether you want to take the vote tonight or want to wait and see if there are any seven competent voters up next here. That might be the sentence, rather than muddy, muddy up the record a little bit.
I don't think we muddy it, I'm just trying to protect myself.
I'm anxious about what it looks like in front of the board if we do it that way.
The one thing that my client would ask is, is there any, any other positive comments and questions? Is there any other concerns any of the board members might have that we might be able to address, rather than just a vote for or a pound, which is something we can address when we have a target?
I didn't get from any of the members of the board, feedback from them, that there was any negative comment from any members of the board.
Yeah, I didn't have any negative comments. I honestly think that the city was really great insofar as safety-wise, I think it's really good. The only concerning comment I have is just with, like I said, again, with the board comments, like that, that can reconsider until even all comments, in a month or so, but it is a great, a great review from the board.
Thank you.
Not that this matters, but I know your 90-dayer street project has set some affordable housing units.
Oh, yeah.
Projects don't follow the.
Again, I think we have a few of the larger ones. The Rory project has 120. One of the projects that were now, was a litigation with the pain with Rory, now it's, that's got 180, because there's a lot of it coming online, more appropriate than those larger, still disclosing it, the benefit of the state on spire tax credits, and that makes those units much more market.
So perhaps we'll like to proceed to a vote?
Yeah, I think we'll proceed to a vote.
Okay, conditions?
Okay, I thought you were going.
No, I was going to ask you a question.
All right. To the board accede, please. The following conditions shall apply to terms of the city engineering report dated March 21, 2025, submission of all necessary easements and or cross-access variance reviewed by the board attorney and city engineer required. Same payment of site performance bonded amount to be reviewed and reviewed by city engineers, submission of site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in amount calculated pursuant to Title 16.249160, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Title 13.04, 13.08, issuance of road open permit from the city engineer required, compliance of terms and fig now planning consultants report dated March 24, 2025, mandatory monetary contribution to the city's treaty preservation trust fund in amount to be required by Title 8.48, planning review escrow funded for all anticipated review reviews, payment of any other fees due to the city of New Brunswick related development or use of this project, payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees, no 610 planning order waiver, the N R P now commission for your waiver, period of conservation district to your waiver, submit engineering site plan to comply with any change required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing, submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing, execution of the Title 39 Parking Enforcement Some special conditions here, we have the waiving of the on-street permit parking passes, you'll have to pay to the payment of the parking fund, and the building would be providing private trash, private haul trash, and recycling. All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at the sole expense, all onsite utilities to be constructed underground, all temporary approaches to the public right of way shall require city council approval, all construction stations shall be done onsite unless an approach and allowing for the public right of way is approved by city council, streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris, the applicant shall cause streets to be cleaned to direct to the facility by the way of public works, tracker pads shall be installed at all construction exits, replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks is permitted to direction city engineer, schedule pre-construction meeting with city engineer department. We have a D variance for F A R, we have a height C variance, two single side yard setback variances, combined side yard setback variance, rear yard setback variance, building covered variance, parking variance, lot width variance, front yard setback, either mechanicals in the front yard variance, and a variance for signage, and a design waiver for landscape planting required. And is any of those?
I think the waiver, because there were two different things. There's a parking aisle width, 24 versus 22, but there's also the driveway entrance to 24 from 30 to 36. I think that's a waiver.
Yeah, so parking aisle, you know, parking aisle dimensions and park and driveway width, design waivers.
Yes.
All right. Well, that, that they just have to, that would be if they had to file any kind of easements, but they discussed that they would be looking to most likely abandon the easement. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be.
It's not a condition, but it's understood to be possible, that's what they're looking to do.
Yeah. I just wanted to see if that would be often included under your reading.
No, I didn't say so.
Okay.
All right, may I have a motion to approve? So.
I cannot argue this fast, as you speak. Lutti Mimihas?
Yes.
Barry Sherman?
Yes.
Allegastinada?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Mike Felton?
Yes.
Johnson Martin?
Yes.
I mean, thank you very much for your consideration. Sorry to be a pain on the cities.